Now, open the Tuesday, November 5th, 2019, pre-agenda meeting of the Iroquois County Board of Commissioners, and I will roll down to item number four and ask Ms. Jones if we have any adjustments to the agenda.
Yes, our Chairman Mallory, we have one addition under new business, and that would be to add a discussion regarding the commissioner meeting rules and procedures, and you do have something on the bench before you that is supporting information for that discussion.
All right, rolling down to, are there any other adjustments to the agenda? Anyone else know? We will have no appointments before the board this evening, that I'm aware of, and we have three public hearings, and why don't we get a little preview of those from Mr. Todd?
Good evening to the board. We do have three public hearings. The first one is an ETJ request that you may remember from the last meeting by Joyce Johnson. It's pretty much surrounded by Moore's jurisdiction, shown in blue. We've not really had any or too much opposition. We've had a few questions at this point. This one is scheduled for annexation in December by the town, and it is for commercial use that needs water in a sewer, and that's what's triggering the ETJ and the annexation request. Any questions on that one?
Is this across from that Dollar General location?
It is. You've got the food line here, and then I think the Dollar General sits right there.
I think that's the final piece of the Johnson Farm, and that's actually where Ms. Joyce lives. She resides there in the corner. She's had people kicking the tires and stuff, and I think it's ripe for development, and it's pretty much developed all around it.
So, no negative feedback?
None at this time, though.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Nope.
Okay, number two on the list?
The next one is a rezoning down on Oak Ridge Farm Highway at the 150-152 split. You know, we've had a number of rezonings in this area over the years. The property's actually currently zoned neighborhood business. There is a house that sits on it, but the applicant is requesting to rezone back to residential. It's been zoned neighborhood business since countywide zoning, even though it's got the existing house on it, and they've run a couple different, they've lived there, but they've run a couple different commercial-type home-based businesses there over the years, but due to some mortgage requirements, they're requesting to rezone it back to residential. Planning board voted seven-zero in support of this one, and there was no opposition at the planning board meeting.
Any questions for staff?
The only thing is, if we do that, the tax value goes down, but not right away?
That'd be a question for the tax office. It will have an impact, but I do not know the timing of that.
Will the present use still be home-based business?
They won't have the commercial, like, they've had a flag store in the past and a FedEx drop facility. They won't have that anymore.
Because there's a fair amount of vertical structures on that property, right?
There are. It's a larger house, and you can see, I mean, that structure on the left was kind of where they had their flag-based business and some other uses over the years.
Make a nice man cave.
It would.
They could do an Airbnb or something?
They have done, not a full-blown bed and breakfast facility, but yes, they do rental as far as individual rooms, I think.
So, if this changes to, if we do this to the RA in the future, if that property sells and somebody reapplies that it goes back to MB, will there be a note already in the history? I'm assuming that it has been MB in the past?
Yeah, that'd be part of our report to research the past history of it, so, yes, if it, you know, there's a discussion we had with the owner, I mean, not too many people would be willing to rezone, commercially zone property back to RA just from the value aspect in the future of it, but, you know, they're aware of, if somebody in the future wants it, then they've got to come back through the process to rezone it back to commercial.
And the chances of it changing back to MB would be good because it's surrounded on three sides already.
And it's already been MB before.
Has been MB before.
And it is, I mean, the corner of it is in the land use plan. The issue, though, with, you know, with having a single-family structure on it, is there are some limitations on what they could do as far as if they're wanting to add on to it for the single-family purposes, leaving it commercial, so putting it back to residential does give them a little more flexibility to use it in that capacity.
But then if they flip back to not, you know, neighborhood business, would they then be, want to be grandfathered in?
Yeah.
Is this a way to get past more stringent commercial zoning requirements? Take it back to residential, do whatever you want to do, and then flip it back to?
No, because, I mean, once it's rezoned to residential, they can only use it for residential. If they decided to do some type of commercial use, they wouldn't be grandfathered just because it was zoned MB before. They'd have to come back through the full process to request neighborhood business or highway business or whatever other commercial district they asked for.
My question is, if they were, typically, if you're going from RA and you're not going to be, so, let's say it's in compliance with certain residential setbacks, whatever, but not in compliance with commercial, now that they go back to RA, a less restrictive standard, they come back to and ask to go to MB in the future, whatever they've done to do what they couldn't do in a neighborhood business restriction, would they come back and say, "Oh, well, you know, can you grandfather us in because we were RA"? Well, they're RA because, you know what I mean?
It does have that potential, you know? If they ended up adding on, they would have to meet the setbacks for the residential, and then if they rezoned it, there'd be a possible, but honestly, the setbacks between MB and RA aren't that different. In fact, MB may be a little less, but the potential is there. But also, remember, if they're building a structure under the single-family code and they rezoned it to neighborhood business, they're going to have issues with the commercial building code at that point, so there's going to be more, more, more problems trying to do that than it would be trying to get around any other type of rules.
I think I would make a note in the records that, you know, if there's a problem with whatever structures in the future that they're converting it to neighborhood business, that they need to be brought into strict compliance, because, you know, they just don't need to be back and forth and back and forth to take advantage of whatever's the more, least restrictive guidelines, if you know what I mean. I just don't think you should pick and choose like that.
I tend to err on, you know, if the property owner wants to do this, excuse me, I mean, a lot of times there's neighborhood opposition if you're going to make something a commercial note or make it a business, very few people to, very few times do people say, "Oh, no", you know, "We object to a house", you know, a house, maybe a large development, and in the way that some people tried to park property for future development at a lower tax rate was by planting a couple of pine trees on it and calling it a farm, and then having current, you know, current use valuation, and then the way that got fixed was if you switched it from current use or farm use to, to develop it, then you owed, you owed the taxes as if you had owned it for the previous, what, three years?
Three-year leaseback.
As a development. So, I'm not saying that, that that's what's going on here, but I think all of us, this is so unusual, I mean, I've been on the board for, been on 13 years, first time I've ever heard it.
I can remember one other time-
Very rare.
-on Highway 150, just out where River Highway narrows back to Tulane, there was a piece of property out there that asked to come from commercial back to residential, and it was, it was right in around 2008 when the credit bubble burst, and they were trying to get the taxes lower and stuff, and I think the concern of the present sitting board was that there would be a landslide of people wanting to go back to residential because the economy was bad, but that didn't happen, but, okay, thanks.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with it going-
Right. No, I think it's a good discussion.
It's just down the road, you know, you don't want to have gaming the zoning code to get less restrictive treatment and then grandfathering in whatever their non-conforming use is. Thank you, Matthew.
The last public hearing we have is near the exit 42 interchange, outlined in blue there on the screen. This is a request, it's currently zoned RA, request to go to GB, just over 33 acres. It fits in with the plan. Again, planning board voted seven-zero to support this request. We didn't hear any negative feedback from the town of Troutman, and again, there was no opposition at the planning board meeting. A portion of this property is actually already under contract for commercial use, and I'd be happy to answer any other questions on that.
There was no opposition from Summer Tree Drive? Looks like that's-
There was not, not at planning board, and we've not heard of any since planning board either.
And that's residential, Summer Tree?
That's correct.
Yeah, that was my only, my observation as well is, you know, a lot, unfortunately, the, the public a lot of times gets involved after the ink's been dry on the, on the deal. Exhibit number one, I-77, okay? So, the, you know, I'd feel better if I just kind of knew what they were planning to do. Is it going to be a muffler shop with a bunch of cars?
A planning board that received a notice?
Cars or body shop getting waited to, to get worked on and stored back behind those houses? If that's the case, people are going to be unhappy. If it's office space and that little space in the back is probably just going to get left to, to turn back into woods, probably nobody's going to say anything.
That's right, and this is a straight-up, it's not-
This is a straight-up rezoning. You know, there will be some buffering requirements along those residential lots. There's some existing vegetations, and they may be able to take advantage of that. You know, the way this property's shaped at this point, this back piece is going to be very tough to use with the setbacks in place. More, more likely than not, one day it will get somehow utilized with the piece to the west.
Is this in a watershed?
No, no watershed.
It looks like it has, it, just on the aerial photograph, looks like there's a massive right-of-way for a power line or something.
There is.
It kind of cuts like an egg salad sandwich down there.
I, I thought it had the peanut butter sandwich appearance, but maybe egg salad.
Well, the egg salad's always diagonal. The, that is going to be a tough piece of property to develop, so the road frontage piece obviously is what they're shopping for there.
Right.
Yeah. Right there. Okay.
Matthew, on this, bring me up to speed on the notices that go out to the residential, the adjacent property owners, and that being residential. There would have been rezoning notices went out to those adjacent property owners for the public hearing at the planning board, and would there also be notifications going out at this particular public hearing?
Yeah, so the, so the planning board doesn't hold the official public hearing, you guys do, they, but we do advertise with letters to the adjacent property owners, so anything, anything touching the blue line, which you'll notice some of these didn't, would not have received it because they're not, they're technically not touching.
There's only three lots.
But the ones here would have received it and usually were travels in a neighborhood.
Yeah.
So, I can't imagine that they wouldn't have been aware of it.
We just want people to feel like they've had their due process.
And then, of course, we do put the yellow rezoning sign out at the road.
Any additional questions?
You know, when you look at some of the shapes of the properties, if you look at the, there's a little, a little wedge or a triangle between the, the property in question and the rest of the neighborhood, and, you know, it, it belongs to a piece of property that's separated by road frontage by two additional parcels, you know? I don't know how these law, lines ever got drawn. I guess a Serv, the Surveyor Employment Act must have been in place, but we've got some weird pieces, weird parcels, weird-shaped parcels for certain. That's, that's it. I don't have a problem with it.
Okay. Thank you, Matthew.
Thank you.
You get to stay where you are? Okay, item 8.1, this is on the consent agenda. Beth, if you could tee all those up?
Absolutely, and Mr. Todd has the first item, which is the request from Planning and Development to consider calling for a public hearing on November the 19th, 2019 in regard to text amendments to the Land Development Code.
We've, we've done a few of these text amendments over the last couple of years. This is similar to one that we've done before. The ordinance several years ago basically broke a bunch of separate ordinances together and scattered them throughout the ordinance. At the time, we thought it seemed like a good idea, but what we ran into immediately was if somebody came in and asked for a copy of a specific ordinance, we couldn't give it to them. Suddenly, we had to give them all 300 pages and tell them that they could look in this section, this section, this, you know, we had a name of about 10 sections for them to find it, and so we're, we're trying to consolidate it into just an appendix that we can hand them when they're asking about the erosion control rules and regulations. Also, we were updating some general statute changes that came about a couple of years ago, or last year, I believe, and the state model ordinance. With those general statute changes, there were things we were already having to abide by, but finally getting it into the ordinance to avoid any, any misunderstandings and just making sure it was clarified. So, really, it looks, when you look at it, it looks pretty jumbled up, the way we try to track the changes, what we're taking out, what we're putting in, but, you know, in summary, again, trying to match the general statute requirements, the model ordinance, which included things such as clarification of exclusions, you know, what doesn't fall in. There was new regulations from the general statutes on first-time offenders, you know, we put that in there, and the process that's involved on that, plan transfers, again, back when the economy kind of tanked, you had a lot of outstanding plans, and there was no real formal process of how to handle those, so that got clarified. There was a max penalty, again, it was already set by the state, but it wasn't really in our code, that was $5,000 per day, so that's showing up in the code. That's not a number that we've created, that was a number created at the general statute level. As far as anything that's more unique to our individual requirements is back when we first put this in place, if you're in a watershed, just serving over a half acre to less than an acre, we were going to capture that, but in the ordinance at a couple of places, it said an acre or less. Well, technically, it's, that, that was causing some confusion, because if you're an acre, you're the full-blown plan, and we were trying to make sure that that's understood, that it's between half acre and less than an acre, which I know that, I mean, that's just some, some minor verbiage. The other issue that we changed is on the self-inspection process that these sites are supposed to do. The code previously basically required them to self-inspect after each phase of grading, and what we wanted is for them to do their self-inspections after each one-inch rainfall. So, that does require these guys to get out there and monitor their sites a little more frequently, which hopefully will catch stuff. You know, we'd rather them find something and address it long before we do our monthly inspection, which really, that matches what the state requirement is on their construction stormwater regs, they require the one-inch inspection anyway, so really, it shouldn't be too much of a burden on them because they're already supposed to be doing it just for a different set of regulations that are out there. Planning board did vote seven-zero to recommend these changes.
I didn't see a whole, I was trying to figure out if, if anything changed substantially in content, I mean, in structure, you know, I was seeing a lot of stuff that was lying through on page two, and it was added and read on page four, and I, I was trying to see if anything got put in that wasn't there before, or got taken out that wasn't, that was there before.
Right.
I, I didn't see anything of substantial content. Was I correct? Because it was-
Yeah.
It was a little bit hard to follow.
The only thing really is that, that one-inch inspection. I mean, that's the biggest and the main con, truly content change from what was previously in place.
Before we had this, before we had this, I mean, I, you know, I, when I lived on Lake Norman, and I lived in the back of a cove, and there's another branch off of our cove, and they, they came and they, when they went to develop it, I mean, they bulldozed every piece of plant life you could, almost down to the shoreline, put up a little silt fence that was a couple of feet high, staked in with little wooden stakes, and, and when it rained, it rained an inch in the first 30 minutes, and, you know, the, the water, it was on a steep grade, the water absolutely blew the, the silt fence away. They had complied with the letter of the law, not the intent, and that cove, which had been dredged out to six to 10 feet, you can wade across it now. So, I mean, real damage is done when people don't protect the waterways, and in Lake Norman, the biggest pollutant isn't some effluent from a factory or from sewage systems, it's sediment. And, and, and back, and I'm, I'm just adding this in for context, because this is really an important part of what we should do in the county, what we need to do and what we must do. As part of the re-licensing for all the dams on the Catawba River, I was involved with that, gosh, that was, that was a long time ago, and, and one of the things that, when we were studying the water system in the Catawba, the, the flow of the Catawba River through the various dams, is the water systems, the water treatment plants, the water, you know, whether it's treating sewage or treating water for drinking, are built based upon the pollutants, whether it's chemicals or biologicals or sediment, that they build those plants to filter out the water quality as they know it, and there's a real question of if people upstream substantially change the quality of the water, and that plant that some municipality already has built and has operated for years no longer can clean up the water because somebody upstream dirtied it up, then are they financially liable to build or rebuild or build a new water treatment facility for, for everybody who's affected downstream? There's a whole lot of people downstream of, of these waterways, okay? So, so it's important that we protect our waterways from excessive sediment, I mean, you can't filter out every grain of sand, but we've got to do a good job of it, because there's a chance we could be on the hook for some really big bucks if we screw up the water, the quality of the water for the people downstream, and, and, and we've all seen Lake Norman turn, it looks like a cup of coffee during some of those, during the days when we had a whole lot of development. A lot of it's already developed, it's got vegetation, we've done a good job with buffers, good jo, I, I think a lot of what, what we've tried to do and the state's tried to do to protect, to, to protect those waterways is paying benefit, but I remember in 2006 and eight, or 2006 and before that, I mean, Charlotte Observer had big photos of, of aerial pictures taken from the air of how parts of Lake Norman had just turned orange from large residential construction projects, and all that stuff just flowed right into the lake. So, anyway, so, why am I saying all of this? It's, it's good that we have this, it shouldn't be here just so that, you know, when we say self-regulate, yep, they need to check on, they need to check themselves, but if, if people call in, we need to go out there, too, because, you know, one or two rains and the damage is done, and there's really, there's no recourse for, if some, if, if somebody ruins a stream or fills in a cove, there's really no recourse, and the affected property owners, they just have to live with it, so we only have prevention here, okay? We only have prevention. So, anyway, so with that, thank you for the, for the hard work, and, and our people that are doing this, please take it serious, because the damages is real when it's done.
I've got a couple of things, Matthew. Page seven, the step five implementation, is that basically just to make sure that expectations are clear to those permittees?
Which, which one?
Page seven, the step five you're implementing?
Yes, you know, having those pre-construction meetings are, are critical to, to go over the plan and, and the sequences of installing- the plan and, and the sequences of installing the measures, just to make sure that the contractors that are out in the field are on, on board with what the approved site plan
That takes away the "I didn't know" factor later.
Correct. It helps tremendously.
It reduces it, doesn't eliminate
Doesn't eliminate it, and then on page eight, kind of the same thing, step five. But to Ken's point, does this amendment need to have something in there to where if it's complaint-driven, if some, you know, the rains we've had over the last five years or so, if there is something noticed, is there a legal statutory ability to have something in our text amendment that gives you some type of erosion control authority to require a property owner causing damage to someone else's property or to a stream or something to correct it? Is that, is that a possibility?
Well, and Randy Moore from our office is sitting back here, so if I misspeak, he can jump up, but, I mean, there, there's definitely, it, it's already in place. So, yeah, if you have off-site sediment, again, you know, there's a difference in the water having an orange color and truly being sediment that's deposited on your neighbor's property, or in a, you know, wet weather ditch or whatever it is, then yes, they actually do have to go in there. And, I mean, at times, it's, it's manual with a shovel to shovel it back out, because we don't want them causing more harm getting it out to the area. So, that's, that's already in there, to be able to address somebody that has off-site sediment from one of these projects.
Do you think that's got enough teeth? That's my question, I guess, is, to Ken's point, is if something happens, do you need more, or do you have adequate
I, I think
Enforceability
It's adequate, when, again, when you have the off-site.
Yeah, I like those two points, and those areas there, just to make sure expectations are, it may, it may help avoid some things that otherwise, because a lot of these people get these permits and they just start digging, they've not looked at it real closely, and if somebody goes over it, and you can point to that later, from our perspective, it may prevent some phone calls to us, or you and the manager of, "I didn't know about it," you know, well, you met, you deal, you dealt with it upfront.
Well, I had a silt fence.
Yeah.
Well, and it's a good time to make sure that the plan that they're working off of is the plan that was approved in our office to
Right, right, okay. Good job with that, I did, I like all of that.
Thank you.
Is Appendix H, is that Table H dash six point one? Because there's a lot of references here in your amendment piece to ordinance to be added as Appendix H. So this whole thing is Appendix H, or is the, just the table in here?
Now, Appendix H will be, it will be the full document, but it's, it's cleaned up instead of, you know, having all the crosshatch, I mean, it's the, it's this full document, but it's, it would be renumbered essentially, but it's got the same verbiage as what's in that staff report.
Well, I think it makes eminent sense to consolidate this into one document that everybody, you know, from A to Z, but I would, I would have about three or four proofreading sessions with all the amendments, the cut and pasting that's gone on here.
Yeah.
The chances of, you know, missing one, misapplying one, and then people, if they see an opening, they'll drive a truck through it. So, just, I, I'm sure we'll approve it, but if there's any change to the verbiage, you know, between now and you publicizing it, let us know, so
Yeah, no, there'll be, there'll be no changes to the verbiage after you guys approve it.
I'm just saying that all the amendments which are delete this, this is, you know,
Yeah.
The, the history of the document, so to speak. Okay. Any other questions? I think we're good.
Are we good for consent?
Consent?
Is that everything on the consent agenda?
Consent.
We didn't do the
Item one.
It's a request to call for a public hearing.
Yeah, right. Consent?
Consent.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Todd.
Yeah.
The next item is a request from the Health Department, and the request is being made by Jane Henson for approval of Budget Amendment Number Nine to accept Bright Ideas' grant funds in the amount of $49,500 to purchase cold chain management equipment.
Good evening.
Good evening, Jane.
Just to tell you a little bit about why this is important and why we have this request, there is a national medical countermeasures program that's managed by Division of Department of Homeland Security, DHHS, and CDC, and the purpose of that program is to build capacity for public health response to national emergencies. Because we receive state funds through the Public Health Preparedness Branch that comes from the CDC, we also are required to have a local preparedness program that's managed, of course, by Samantha Miggit, and we must have a local medical countermeasures plan. So in doing that, the significance is the medical countermeasures program within 12 hours could give us access to antibiotics, antitoxins, life support medications, and other med-surg supplies. This program was established in the late 90s when we were worried about biological agents like anthrax, botulism plague, and smallpox and other emerging infectious diseases. So we do have a local plan, and in that plan, we have guidelines for how we request, receive, organize, distribute, and dispense these assets in collaboration with emergency management. We are required to have a full-scale exercise every five years, and we'll be having an exercise next spring. We would love for you to help participate and be volunteer clients or patients coming through. We have to test three capabilities. One is the local receiving site, where these supplies would come in, we would have security at that receiving site, then they would be dispensed to two open points of dispensing and to 30 closed points of dispensing. And the open points of dispensing would be where we would ask the community to come. Our exercise will be a pandemic flu exercise, and if we had to vaccinate the entire community, we would be running 24 hours continuously until we vaccinated the community. And the closed pods are places like the hospitals, the jails, nursing homes, that in our plan, we already know how many doses of the medication needs to be distributed there, and they would vaccinate in a flu event like this. And then we would operate our Public Health Command Center. So it's important, if we are vaccinating, in this scenario would be a pandemic flu, we would have flu vaccine that would be worth over $3 million, and we have to keep that vaccine within a certain temperature range for it to be effective. And right now, we have styrofoam containers and a few coolers, so we had an opportunity to ask to receive this grant funding, and the state has approved that. So if we have, you can imagine, if we have to transport this all over the county to the closed sites, and even at our two schools that are, would be our point of dispensing site, to maintain those temperatures, to make sure it stays within the range that it needs to be. Any
This is just for the transportation, because
Yes.
I remember we've got a, a generator
Mm-hmm.
To, to do it if power went out, so
That's right.
This is not to maintain the temperature at the center, but for when you're distributing.
Right, right, we have a generator at the Health Department, again, with our state immunizations, we have to maintain, we have to have an alarm system on our state immunizations at both Health Departments and Mooresville Statesville, because there's hundreds of thousands of state vaccine that we would not want to have to replace. So if, if something happens there, the generator kicks on, which you're right. This is to transport it to the site, to maintain it during a whole event if we were vaccinating or had any other medications that needed to stay within temperature.
Any other questions? Consent?
Consent.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for, and the staff for going through the process of getting this grant, it's a great, great use of funds.
Thank you, Ms. Simpson. The next request is from Parks and Recreation, and Michelle Hepler is here, along with Seth Gardner, to make this request for approval of Budget Amendment Number Ten to accept a grant in the amount of $5,000 from USA Archery.
Good evening, Chairman Mallory, members of the board. I want to take this opportunity to introduce Seth Gardner, he is our youth program specialist. He joined our team back in the spring and has certainly hit the ground running. He gets all the credit for this request as well. So we're here before you tonight to request approval for Budget Amendment Number Ten to accept a grant in the amount of $5,000 from USA Archery. These funds will cover staff training, certifications, and all of the equipment needed to start and run an archery program. The grant acceptance of the $5,000 in additional funds for recreation supplies and training and development is, it comes at no cost to the county. Future budget implications would be minimal. The equipment lifespan is approximately five years, depending on use, and staff training and recertification costs will be less than $200 every three years. Accepting this grant will provide the county with the equipment, the safety materials, and again, I want to emphasize, it requires no match from the county. One of the non-monetary values that I think is significant in accepting this grant would be the expansion of Parks and Recreation programming. It brings a structured, safe activity that includes adaptive resources for inclusive programming. These various models can be adapted for participants of all ages and all abilities. So it's a, it's a programming style that can be adaptive, and those tools come, the resources and tools come with the certification and the program model that we receive. The only downside we can see to accepting this is finding secure and safe storage of all of the equipment. We've been working diligently to locate space at Jennings Park and space at the Recreation Center, so we'll be splitting the equipment in two locations. That does give us an opportunity to provide programs in two locations without having to transport, but, but the intent would be to store half of the equipment at Jennings Park and the other half at the Recreation Center. And if you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
One thing I'd like to add, and this is something that Ms. Hepler and I talked about earlier, is this is a component of the outdoor education program, so there's, there's different programs and things of that nature that's part of that outdoor education facility and model that we have, so this would be a component of, of that program.
Correct. Very similar to, say, our canoeing, we do canoeing programs, we do environmental education programs. Historically, we've offered off-site rock climbing and that, that, that type of programming under that outdoor education division, and this archery would fall in that category.
So this is not, this is a additional aspect of that whole programming menu, but it's not going to morph into running some kind of league, or there's some entity out there that already exists that deals with competitive archery, and the county isn't getting into that business?
Correct.
Okay.
What will be the reoccurring expense on replacement of this equipment, since it has a lifespan of five years? Is that something that you're gonna set back in a little fund where it to replace this equipment as it goes bad?
We can build that into our general budget if, if, if needed. The approximate cost is about $35 to $3,700 for the actual target, targets, bows, arrows, and that sort of thing. I think it would be dependent on the wear and tear and how quickly things do wear out.
Okay, but that's something you plan to build into the, the recreation budget in future years for the replacement of this equipment?
If the program is successful, yes.
And we don't have an archery program at this time, correct?
We don't have an archery program. We have provided archery for summer camp students in the past. We've had some very limited equipment, some bows and some arrows and some targets, but nothing as substantial or as nice of quality as this stuff.
Thank you. Elizabeth Warren wins, this could all change.
She's not going to go there. Okay. Comments? Consent?
Consent.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Michelle.
Thank you very much, and thanks Seth for writing the grant.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. The next item is a request from the Clerk to the Board for approval of the 2020 meeting calendar, and we have one suggested revision, and if you'll flip to that calendar, we went ahead and took the liberty of adding the retreats on that calendar as well, so we could plan ahead. We typically have two retreats, we have a fall retreat and a winter retreat, and one of the suggestions is to move the, the fall retreat, which would be, which is already on the calendar in green on November the 13th, to December the 11th, and have that fall retreat there in December, on December the 11th. So that is the one suggested revision, and just a reminder, I know it looks a little kind of odd, but typically, we do not have a meeting that first week in November, because that's election.
And, and that's the reason for moving the retreat, is to afford a new board membership to be able to sit down with everybody and
To participate in that, yes.
Issues.
In, in theory, though, that puts two retreats within 60 days of each other.
That's true, but I think the opportunity to get folks up to speed is beneficial when you're talking about introducing them to a strategic planning process and all of that. Is, any other comments on the
Hold on a second, whoa, whoa.
One question.
Okay.
And, and, look, this year, this next year coming up, in July, you did put two meetings back. Do we, will we have enough information for two meetings in July?
Typically, we, we have canceled that one because of the July 4th holiday, but since the July 4th holiday actually falls on that weekend, we went ahead and left that one in, but you were correct, Commissioner Norman, that is another month that we typically only have one meeting, so if the board would wish to, to continue to do that and only have one, that would be in our normal practice. We just did not, because the holiday fell on that weekend.
Well, it was not, it was just, if we have enough information on my meeting, I don't want to meet just to be meeting, okay?
Right, absolutely.
Whoever put this together, clearly cold hard, not a romantic on
Valentine's Day.
February 14th, Valentine's Day, then we're gonna, we're gonna, and then we're supposed to all of a sudden be these handsome debonair gentlemen with our wives, and then come back on the 15th. Y'all are, y'all are cool. Actually, I, I have a, I've got about 80 Boy Scouts coming to the farm on, on the 15th and 16th. Can we push that back one week or two?
We can, we absolutely can, and this is, this is just tentative, this is just kind of a suggested thing. One of the reasons we didn't want to push it further is because that's really our, that is our retreat, that we really delve into the budget
Right.
And we need some direction from the board, but as far as pushing it back, we couldn't, we, we could certainly do that, if, if the board wishes to do that. And if you, I suggested that we kind of go ahead and add this to our calendar, but if you want to take off the retreat dates, and we can fine-tune those later, we can certainly do that.
It's good to put them as a placeholder.
Yeah.
I think slipping it to the 21st, 22nd should be a problem.
Okay.
It's not so far, but
I, I just assume we have the dates, so we can go ahead and pencil it in.
Yeah.
Right.
If something else to get planned, if you don't do that.
So move the February retreat to the 21st and 22nd?
Yes.
Yeah.
And are, is everyone okay with the December 11th suggested fall retreat?
I am.
You won't be there, will you?
Consent, as it's been proposed and adjusted?
Consent.
Yeah.
Okay, and the next item is a request from the Clerk to the Board for approval of the minutes from October the 1st and the 15th, 2019.
All right, any comments or corrections?
Consent.
Consent?
Yeah.
Okay, we have one announcement. Okay, we have one announcement for Central Economic Development District Board of Directors for two vacancies. Have we gotten any, anybody on there that want, is wanting to roll over and continue to serve? Do we have any indication of that?
Ms. Anderson was just telling me that these are the ones that we're aware of, but Jen Bojer, we had recommended that she be one of those in her capacity as, with our economic development, and she has agreed to serve in that capacity. But if, this would just be the announcement of those two vacancies, but we do feel that that would be a, a good one as far as a suggestion, and she's interested in filling out that application.
Who are in the positions right now?
I am one of them, and who's the other one? Russ Rogerson was the other one. Those, those are the two positions.
Okay. Are you volunteering again?
I, I, I will certainly volunteer unless someone else is, is interested in serving in that capacity.
All right. Well, we'll go ahead and announce those and then see who comes to the table. And item 10, appointments. We have one appointment to the Recreation Advisory Board, and Deborah Tattoo has volunteered to serve for the first time, and her resume, impressive resume is attached.
Yes.
Who's rolling off of that? Somebody not wanna serve again?
It just fell.
Yeah, I'm saying, is the, whoever that, she's replacing, if she's appointed, is that-
She had a resignation.
Oh, okay. I got you. Okay.
That's why we announced it.
That's what, okay. Right, right, right. All right. Follows one.
All right. Marvin, do you wanna make that motion? And the seven o'clock now?
Glad to.
Okay, we have no unfinished business that I'm aware of. Anybody else? It is not a public comment, period. New business, we have a discussion regarding a, uh, meeting procedures that's been proposed to, uh, discuss among us about the potential for phoning in from remote locations to participate in some, uh, in those opportunities when one member or no more than whatever we choose in terms of numbers and frequency and, um, quorums, as are all issues that we can address. We can go ahead and discuss that from perspectives of Commissioners that I think have all been apprised of the proposal. And this rather lengthy, uh, analysis of legal precedents that is actually a sort of a nationwide look, it's not just North Carolina, is here for us to digest, which we're not gonna be able to digest this evening. So I would suggest that we simply discuss the matter for this evening, and then if we can arrive at, uh, a sense of where we're gonna go forward, that we can go ahead and vote on the matter two weeks from now and give us a chance to further refine any questions or opinions about ways to go forward. So I'll ask Commissioner Haupt, since he brought this to our attention, to go ahead and share his proposal.
In, in my discussions with Lisa, and I also contacted after reading this local government law bulletin from Freda Bluestein from the School of Government, the, without board approval or without board policy existing, you fall back to Robert's rules, which requires you to be present to participate in the meeting, and correct me if I'm wrong, Lisa, to vote. And so if you require, if you make a port, board policy that allows for, uh, remote participation, then that trumps Robert's rules and would allow you to call in and participate and vote in the meetings. The concerns that Freda had explained to me was she would say in her opinion, 'cause I asked, was that she would suggest that you're limited to two to three meetings a year. More than that would require board approval by majority if you were gonna, if a board member was gonna go beyond two or three, um, uh, remote participation. And that we would always require by policy a quorum of our board or any board, which is three for us, to be present in person. That way, you could have no more than two, uh, participate remotely if necessary. But those were the main things, and then she said that, uh, you don't have to put this into policy, but she said that if you had a, uh, something coming on the agenda that was gonna be contentious or required a lot of, uh, public input or something, that the board could either, uh, continue that to the meeting where everybody's gonna be back present, um, or you could, you know, just remotely participate and vote, just as you were if you were present. So that would be the pleasure of the board if you adopted a policy. But with, uh, people being gone for various reasons or having a family emergency, there's all kinds of reasons that could, could come up in today going into 2020. Um, you know, last year, I participated in a meeting, or this year, having pneumonia. You know, one of our things that we call in and do it by speakerphone, so it wouldn't require anything elaborate other than a speakerphone or someone's cellphone to be able to participate. And if we did this, it would just be a limited amount of two or three times a year without further board approval. And, um, it wasn't, you know, it doesn't require a big deal. Most boards throughout the state allow this for various reasons, and so we can open discussion. But that's kind of what she had suggested, and Lisa can elaborate on that if I misstated anything that you understand about it.
No, I think that's what we discussed, and the only other thing I would add to it is that I think the rules of procedure need to address who gives approval to that member to miss the meeting. And there's some discussion of that in the, in what I provided to you. Is it a phone call to the chairman? Which would be my preference that it's one person because otherwise, you're potentially having open meetings, issues with everybody discussing it. But I think if the, the amendment could address who approves that request.
She suggested to me that you would give, you know, at least a, a week's notice to the chairman in writing that you were gonna be required to miss, you know, anything short of that could be voted upon by the board at the meeting to allow you to call in. Unless, say, you had an emergency and had to leave town for a death or something, if you wanted to have that in your policy, the board at that particular meeting could allow you to call in without, say, you had a five-day notice to the chairman, you were gonna be gone, or more. You could allow that either way.
I think it's just helpful to know ahead of time because of the, the requirement that you have to have a quorum present.
Sure.
And you may not know if there's gonna be a quorum present or who else might need to be out.
Right.
So for planning purposes, I think it would help.
Sure.
Progress that.
I only remember one time that we ever really thinned out. I think we only had three here, but, you know, we always had at least three. But, you know, if you've got a job that requires travel, um, when you have a meeting on Tuesday night, there are no flights that depart Charlotte Douglas after we're done and you drive an hour and a half to two hours on I-77 to get to the airport. So that means you're, you're starting your business trip by flying out Wednesday morning. That, that's really, that's, uh, businesses typically don't like for you to do that. I think this would probably benefit me. So I'm self, a little bit selfish, but I think this, this would help me. In the past, I would say, I, I'll tell you, I mean, I dealt with this when my travel schedule was much, much heavier. When we had something that was, that we thought would be contentious or controversial, we postponed it until we would all be there. There were a couple of instances where it was something timely with zonings and such that it, that it could not be postponed because of when we made announcements and all that kind of stuff. And, uh, so this would be a way to, I think, accommodate that, kind of using the technology of today. As long as we make sure that it can't be abused.
Right, right. That's what she said.
That was my concern. I, I share the same.
It shouldn't be a remote board where there's, you know, five screens sitting here.
No. That's what she said, limited.
Pictures of us.
She said, she said, "Limit it by number without board approval and, and give your notices," as Lisa said, "as far in advance as possible."
Well, my whole concern is, I have no problem. You know people gonna be out sick, or somebody could lose somebody in the family, you don't know. Or you could lose yourselves, you know what I'm saying?
Oh, sure.
My whole concern is that we don't wanna get home, sit in a chair, calling in for a meeting, expect me to say, hey, this is you at home. I mean, you're supposed to be sitting down here right there. Now, in other situations, I don't have a problem. I don't want us get used to calling in from home, we elected to sit in these chairs. That's my problem.
Well, that, and that's it. We've got to set a criteria on that to where you can't just say, I stumped my toe today, I'm not gonna be there, I'm gonna call in, you know? Or, or, or if there's gonna be a highly contested vote one night, you say, I don't wanna face that angry crowd, I'll stay at home and just call in. We've got to build in measures that won't allow that to happen because the people have elected us to be here, so.
Like Seth, man, in the past, I mean, we've changed the meet, this board has changed meeting dates to accommodate my, you know, when I knew I was gonna be out of town. And so I, I think, and that goes across boards with lots of different members. I think as a body and as an institution, our reputation is such that we all try to be here. And, uh, but this, this does give us a, another degree of flexibility realizing that we live in a different age and time.
Likewise, if I'm not here with sickness or whatever, you got three or four of the board members to make that decision. And understand what she said a while ago, if you don't have a quorum, that's a problem. But I should be able to depend on you guys making decisions without me.
I, I don't think that this mandates that if somebody is missing the meeting-
They have to call in.
-that they must attend via some remote technology.
Right. Just gives you the ability.
Yeah, there are times when I'm traveling, and at night, we've got significant events that cannot be missed.
You know, this is all process and procedure and, and we can craft it in such a way that, you know, addresses these issues. You know, you can't cover every situation, and at some point in time, you know, it's really a judgment call whether it looks abusive or not. But I think if we limit the number of times during the year and the strict quorum requirement for being present here, and I understand Marvin's concerns, but I would say that, you know, we're a small board, five members, and although we don't have to have five to vote on something, we can, you know, and we generally vote in a similar vein, you know, it is 20% that if one person's not here, we're missing out on 20% of the input into discussions. And we all serve on different task forces. We all have different experiences and knowledge in our kit bags, and anything that we can do to, uh, get more information from all these board members into the decision-making process is an improvement of substance. And I think that, that accommodating members that have business or long, you know, conflicts with longstanding family vacations or, which two of us have had, that the ability to be part of the discussion and share what our, our insights are, you know, that's an important aspect because we function as a board, as a collective. It certainly doesn't mandate the participation.
I did a little bit of background checking. I wanted to check with other jurisdictions to see what they did, and I know Mooresville's loaded up with a lot of technology. So I checked with them, and the way they handle it, if it's a, if it's a planning session or even a closed session, they allow call in. But during their full-blown forward council meetings, they do not. So I don't know, that's something we may, a lot of times, we check with other counties to see what they do, just to, just to see. But, uh, but you know, it's coming up 2020, there's a lot of technology available. So I think, I think it's worth consideration, I really do.
Well, I think, you know, at least if you can work up draft addressing some of those concerns, and I'd just say circulated among every comment, uh, and responses back to you, and, and then everyone have an opportunity to digest all these, uh, issues that, you know, have come up in the past that you wouldn't necessarily think of, but, you know, they've come up in the past, so let's take a look at those and then see where we wanna proceed next meeting and put it on the agenda for a vote. If we can do it on the seven agenda, or we can do it the seven o'clock agenda, doesn't matter, whatever the pleasure of the members are.
When you send out, can we let people decide whether it be two or three, uh, policy, by policy, and any further would require board approval as a suggestion? And would always require at least three, which is a quorum in person present for a meeting? And, um, what would your minimum suggestion?
I, you know, I think, I think that if you, if you have a two-two split, that if the deciding vote is the remote person, that that vote should be deferred until another-
Yeah, just wait till the next meeting. Yeah. Yeah.
Or else the room will be packed and all we have is a virtual presence.
Do you have a recommendation for a minimum notice to the chairman, if you have it, that you may be, you may have to not be here? Is that, was there a suggestion from you? Is that like 72 hours, five days?
Well, I think it would be twofold. I think, you know, as much notice as possible, maybe a minimum of five or whatever it might be, but, you know, you might have an illness that you don't know until 24 hours before. So I think there should be an accommodation for emergency situations that it addresses.
And then there's always the option of just be absent.
Sure. Yeah.
Watch doesn't agree with you.
Work on that and then circulate it, and then we'll come back together and discuss it, uh, on the agenda officially two weeks hence. Any previews on the County Manager Report?
Just two quick announcements. One, we've had a little confusion regarding our retreat. Just a reminder that our retreat, that it was originally scheduled for the 8th, which is this Friday. It is not the 8th, it is the 15th. So our retreat, our fall retreat, will be November the 15th from 8:00 until 5:00. If we can, and I know we have one that's pressed for time, if we can get you out a little sooner, we will certainly do that because we're gonna do a working lunch, so we're gonna keep trudging through, and if we can get you out before 5:00, we certainly will do that.
I've got that covered.
Okay, great.
Yeah, we're good.
And that will be at the Public Library. So just a reminder, it's not this week, it's next week, November the 15th, 8 to 5 at the library. And then just a reminder that county offices will be closed on Monday in observance of Veterans Day. And just appreciation to all of our veterans for their service for our, for our country. And I know we have several sitting on this board, so thank you for your service.
Okay, well, thank you, Beth. Uh, we will now move into a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11 subsection A3 for an attorney-client discussion. subsection A3, for an attorney-client discussion.